Call the meeting to order, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held September 10th, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. And we do have some folks wishing to address the board tonight. We have two people that want to address on non-agenda items, so we will have those right now. And then we have three folks that will be addressing us on agenda items, and we'll do that when we get to that point in the agenda. We will start with Mike Attenberg.
Attenberg.
Attenberg, excuse me. And you have five minutes if you'll come up to the podium and give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Mike Attenberg. I live at 7505 East Pine Lake Drive. Not in the city, but I have a question about the Whittier area. Hi, Mr. Tolke, how you doing?
What's that?
How are you?
Good.
Good. My question is, my son currently has a house for sale in the Whittier block. It's at 516 North Indiana Avenue between 4th and 5th. And there's all kinds of rumblings about how, you know, they're gonna tear Whittier down, they're gonna buy them houses up, they're gonna build the school there, they're gonna connect the field, all this. And it's creating a little bit of uncertainty for people that are looking at the house. I don't think there's a lot of good information other than, oh, you know, this, we're gonna do this sometime, or we're not gonna do this sometime, or school for the Argus, right, it's the school for the deaf. No disrespect if anybody hears from the Argus. We're gonna use the school for the deaf possibly that way. But it's, what it creates is an uncertain selling opportunity. So if there's any clarity that you can offer on what's gonna happen there, you know, anything at all. And it matters not whether it's not gonna happen, or it's gonna happen in 10 years, or whether it's gonna happen soon, just some information would be great. That's all I'm asking.
And I will tell you that the election was a week ago, and the Whittier neighborhood conversation took place during the task force meetings, and the administration will be working on the details on that. That process hasn't started. What I would recommend that you do is to address your concerns to the superintendent, and then when that plan begins to work through, you will certainly be responded to in a very appropriate manner.
And how do I address the superintendent?
I'm gonna get a card out for you right now.
Oh, there you are. How you doing?
Yeah, it's like I said. Okay. I guess that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Smeeters? 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 Okay.
Good evening, everyone. May I say to begin with that I'm really in favor of this Sioux Falls needing more schools for our increase in number of students. And my question again is to the, regarding the Whittier area. I've heard some rumblings that 6th Street will be widened from downtown to Clough Avenue. I have a call into the engineer of the street department to find out. I'm wondering how that would affect the Whittier area. I'm also questioning the architects, and if they've been, anyone who's been out to that land area, from the school down to the track and the park, are you aware of what that land entails? I've lived there many years, I know. There's going to be some added expense to that 37.1, if that's the accurate amount, for the actual structure at Whittier. That really needs to be checked into. If it hasn't, I don't know. Like I said, you know, kind of, there's a lot of questions, and people are wondering what's really going on. I feel there's some things that have kind of been maybe swept under the rug, and I hope not. But there's people in my neighborhood that feel the same way I do. So that's my questions with Whittier. You know, I think it really needs to be checked into before it goes a whole lot further. You know, maybe it has been, I don't know. I'm just questioning it. So I appreciate your help, and remember, honesty is the best policy. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries, and we are on to the good news report. Deanne.
Good evening. We have a special guest joining us this evening, all the way from pure South Dakota. Wade Pogony is with the Associated School Boards of South Dakota, and he is here to present an award to our school board for a program called ALL, ACT, LEARN, AND LEAD. So I'll invite Wade to come forward and tell you more.
Thanks, Deanne, and good afternoon, everyone. It's great to be here. Thanks for having some time to hear me. And I just want to start by saying congratulations on your bond election. I was watching that very carefully for a long time, and I'm just so proud of you and what you've done with that. You know, as an outsider watching that process, and being in the position that we are in with the Associated School Boards, we watch it very carefully. But what you did with the task force and their work, and the amount of information that you were gathering, and the detail, once the recommendations were there, and Dr. Maher and others were in the community talking with various groups, I will tell you that if people call me in the office and say, "How do we go about a bond election?", I'm gonna say, "It's a great model, and I know who you need to talk to", and I would send them to you, because you did it the right way, and it was terrific. And people will say, I will say that if you pass a bond at 60%, you've done well; at 70%, that is excellent; at 85%, it's just outstanding. I mean, it's unbelievable what you did. But what I do know, though, is that the community with that kind of a vote trusts you. They understood the issue, they understood the magnitude of this bond and how big it was, they understood where you were going. And we see bonds around the state all the time. Some of them pass, some of them don't. But I conclude that the citizens of Sioux Falls clearly understand what this board is doing, the transparency of this board, and where you are, and so I just want to commend you for that. At your desk, you have a handout called the Associated School Board's Board Recognition Program. We call it ALL, as Deanne said, it stands for ACT, LEARN, AND LEAD. And what we do is that we keep track of the activities of every school board in the state, and we assign point values to those various activities. You might go to the state convention, you might be present at a region meeting, and in your case, I know that you attended the national convention. There were trainings that were happening there, you've been to other kinds of activities. You might also have some trainings that were done as far as board development or finance, that's the LEARN category. And the LEAD category simply covers those things that if you've played a role either locally, statewide, or nationally in service of some kind, held in office, you might receive some points for that. And so, you know, I was delighted to see that this board was at the national convention, we talked there. And I want to tell you, it's been just a joy and a privilege to work with Mr. Tolke this past year. He has been the president of the Associated School Board's board, and did a marvelous job. He really did. And he represents not only the state as a whole of all 850 school board members, but he represented Sioux Falls very, very well. And so we had numerous conversations, he and I, about this organization and the way we represent school boards. And so, Todd, I just want to say thank you in front of your peers, in front of the meeting everybody here, that I'm grateful for your year, I'm grateful for all that you did, and so this is a good culmination of some of those things. But, well done.
Thank you.
So, on behalf of the Associated School Boards, the Sioux Falls School District accumulated 595 points. You need 500 points to receive the highest level award, which is the gold level award, and you far exceeded that in all your activities. And I think that this award is not about points, and accumulating points, and attending meetings. This award is about your commitment. You don't earn 500 points, or in this case, 595, without commitment. And that's commitment to your community, it's commitment to your students, and it's commitment to the offices that you've agreed to take on. And so I'm proud of you, I really am. This was an outstanding group of people that we have in front of us. So congratulations on the gold level award, and congratulations. Mr. President, if you would accept.
I can have all the board members. I'm not asking.
this board? We're just a phone call away, and I'd be glad to come down again and visit with you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wade, I have, Wade, I have one question for a point of clarification. So all school districts in the state of South Dakota run their own school bond elections, is that correct?
Under, I'm sorry?
Do all school boards in the state of South Dakota run their own school board elections?
Yes.
And their bond votes as well?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wade.
All right, and no conflicts of interest to act on tonight. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Supplemental consent agenda 9A, claims to Sanford. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And two abstentions, Board Member Ryder, Board Member Mickelson. And we are on to the reports of the superintendent, Dr. Maher.
Okay. Thank you. Our first report tonight is an English language learners' WEDA report. Here to give that report is Demi Moon.
Thank you, and good evening. As Dr. Maher said, I am here this evening to update you on the results of the WEDA Access for ELLs report from the spring of 2018, and this is our English language proficiency update. South Dakota is a WEDA consortium member. That means we are one of 39 states who use the WEDA consortium in order to advance our academic language development for our ELL students in our district. This helps us meet federal compliance under both Title I and Title III, which requires us to annually measure the language proficiency of students who are identified as ELL in our district, and ELL standing for English Language Learner. The WEDA consortium creates the assessment that we use in order to measure this proficiency. It is called the Access for ELLs 2.0 Assessment. That assessment must be given annually to all students who are identified in grades K through 12 as being ELL. The assessment addresses four language domains: reading, speaking, listening, and writing. That testing window happens annually between the last week in January and throughout the month of February. Those proficiency levels in all four domains and the composite score are reported in a proficiency level score from 1.0 to 6.0. The result of this access assessment also determines when a student can exit the program, and I'll describe that in just a couple more slides. There were accountability changes in 2017-18. The first one of those changes is that in order to exit the assessment, that criteria moved from a 4.7 to a 5.0, and that is a result of the push across the state that students were exiting before a lot of people felt like they were ready, and ready to be academically proficient, either in post-secondary or in regular academic classes. They also removed the previous sub-score requirements in reading and writing. When the exit criteria was 4.7 as a composite score, you also had to have a 4.5 on the reading and the writing subtests. So if you did not meet all three of those criteria, you didn't exit the program. And now we just have a composite score of 5.0. The other change was that ELL student growth towards exiting is now 10% of each school and district accountability model, or the school performance index that is given out annually on the district in the school report cards. So that is a change that will come with a report card this fall. So what, before we get to the results, what did Sioux Falls School District look like in 2017-18? There were 2,395 students identified as ELL that participated in the assessment. 2,343 of them took the regular assessment, 52 of them qualified for the ALT assessment, keeping in mind that students that take the ALT assessment are not able to exit the program. On the last day of school in 2018, or the spring of 2018, there were 2,400 students in our district identified as ELL. As of this Monday, there were 2,510 current ELL students in the Sioux Falls School District. So what did that growth and what did those results look like from our spring assessment? This graph and this chart show you the numbers. As you go across the top, you can see the students, the number of students that made no growth in the composite reading, writing, speaking, and listening assessment. The next line down shows the number of students who made .1 to .4 growth in all of those areas, and then the numbers who made .5 or greater growth. And the reason we use these benchmarks is because they align to the points that are given in the account of the new accountability model towards, that growth towards exiting. And then the graph below just shows that same chart in a graphic view. Keeping in mind that if you add up the numbers, those numbers don't exactly add up to the number of students who took the assessment, and there's two reasons for that. In order to show growth, you must have two data points, and so we have two categories of students who would not show growth and not would be, and not be included in this chart. Those would be the students that were kindergartners last year, as they, that was their first testing point, and those students that were new to the district last year, as again, that would be their, their single testing point. The number of students who were able to exit our ELL program as a result of their scores in the spring of 2018 are as follows: we had 57 students in grades K through 5, three students in grades 6 through 8, and nine students in grades 9 through 12. And that left 2,274 students who remain needing services. Although not part of the accountability model, the federal requirements are for states that they must report the number of long-term ELLs that are currently in their district each year. In order to qualify as a long-term ELL student, you must be in the program longer than five years. And currently, with our current numbers as of today, we have 551 students who are identified as a long-term ELL. That means they have been in the program longer than five years. This graph shows the distribution, though, all the way from less than one year up to greater than seven years. And lastly, just as a visual of how our current 2,510 students look across the district as far as their composite levels or their WEDA levels, this graph shows you those students that are between a 1 and a 2, between a 2 and a 3, a 3 and a 4, and between a 4 and a 5. And if you add up those numbers, those don't exactly add up to 2,510 either, and that is because we have not currently got all of the scores in for our kindergartners, who we are still in the process of screening at this time, and then any new students to the district. They would not have an official WEDA score in the system yet. So we are currently in the process of getting them screened, and the majority of them will fall into that 1 to 2 category as well. So that bar will take quite a jump once those students are added to our count. And at this time, I would answer any questions that you might have.
What, so looking at the exit, you know, that's our ultimate goal for all these students, is what, will we be getting a report to see what we're gonna work on to hopefully increase that number, you know, now that we have even a higher threshold, that we can increase our percentage of students who are exiting our program?
And I can answer just, you know, quickly tonight, we did give the report in the spring on the program changes that we're making, and so I do hope to have some updates on how those program changes are going for the district, how they're, how things are working out in the schools. And then we'll be excited to see how those program changes transform into our scores this coming year. But I'm always available to give a report like that if that's a desire.
And then I appreciate that, you know, we would have had maybe, what was it, 28 more students who would have exited under the old standards and so forth, so our percentage would have been higher. So we just need to get those over that threshold so we can increase that percentage.
Correct, yes, new threshold. And there were 89 students who had the composite score of a 4.7 or higher, so that old criteria, however, only 28 of them had that additional sub-score requirement met. But again, those are, those requirements are behind us, and so we have to, yes, we have to look forward to the new requirements, which are 5.0 and higher, and we have to work hard as a district in order to get those students the language acquisition that they need to be successful in the classroom academically and to exit the program.
So since 10% of our account, our school report card now is going to be scored on this, what, like, since we have such a high number of ELL, how do we, how are they going to scale that with other school districts who either have none, or, you know, how do, have they talked to you about how they're going to do that?
Yes, you get certain, each student gets either zero points, a quarter of a point, a half a point, or a full point, or if you exit the program early, you can actually get what we call extra credit, because you get 1.25 points. And then they take the average number that every single ELL student who has two data points earns. And so the points are acquired based on their growth towards exiting, and if you come into the, if your initial data point in the state of South Dakota is between a 1 and a 2.9, you get five years to exit the program.
Okay.
If it's between a 3 and a 3.9, you get four years, and if it's between 4 and a 4.9, then you get three years to exit the program. And so what they do is they take that distance from wherever your, the student's initial score is from 5, which is the exiting goal, and they divide that up by the number of years that they have to exit. And that's the growth for each individual student that they are required to make each year. And then based on whether or not they make no growth, they make some growth but not enough, or they meet their growth goal, that's how the points are divided up for each individual student. And so it's not size-dependent. Each individual school district and school building will be based on their number count. And if there are small schools, like, and we do have some in our district that have fewer than 10 ELL students, they have a different methodology for combining like the last three years of scores in order, excuse me, in order to get that score for that building. And if they don't even after three years have enough students to meet that end count, then they will take the district score as their building score.
Thank you.
You bet. Absolutely. Any other questions?
You mentioned the ALT assessment, how is that different from the traditional assessment that the students take?
In order to qualify for the ALT assessment, you must be on an IEP.
Okay.
And then certain students that are on an IEP, that team decides whether or not they qualify for that alternative assessment, which means in most cases, they're not able to perform or show performance on the regular assessment, and so they need an alternative version of the assessment.
Sure.
You bet.
Any other questions?
All right. And then I just, at this time, then I would just recommend that the board acknowledge the report.
May I have a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
This is just an important issue for our district, obviously, and when you have 67 languages or whatever, that number changes, I think, every day in our district. It's a burdensome tax task, but it's something we are, it's very important to our district. So thank you for all the hard work, and keep, keep on working on it.
Thank you.
Okay. No further discussion, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries, thank you. And engagement of architectural firm.
Okay, well, you may have heard, we have a need to build a high school, which means we have a need to bring on an architectural team to do so. Here to talk to you about that tonight is our Director of Operational Services, Jeff Kreider.
Good evening. This will probably be a lot of, a lot of meetings you'll see me here coming up, so this is the start of the process, and, but, a little bit behind the scenes is, in order to get this school built by 2021, we did some preliminary work without obligating the district financially. So over the past two and a half months, we've engaged in the RFP process for Architectural Engineering Services for the high school. On August 9th, we issued the RFP by advertising, web posting, and sending out an RFP to 17 local architectural firms and firms that expressed interest around the area for the, for the project. The projects were, or the proposals were due on September 6th, and from that, we received seven formal proposals. So a committee representing the district evaluated these proposals and recommended three firms for further considerations. On September 20th, this was after the bond election, so we wouldn't probably have these interviews if the bond had failed, the district heard presentations and conducted interviews from three, the three recommended firms. All firms were given 30 minutes, opportunities to address the items listed in the RFP, and describe what makes their team uniquely qualified for our project. The question and answer period followed each presentation. Following the interviews, the firm of Architecture Incorporated and the DLR Group emerged as the leading team for the project. Their proposal included all architectural engineering services required for the projects. The proposed fee was 5.4% of the construction costs, and that is in line with the estimated fee structure that we had estimated. This project is part of the district CIP plan approved by the voters on September 18th. And Steve Jassrem is in the audience today. Do you want to come up and say something before I, we make a recommendation?
So you still have time to back out if he doesn't. Go ahead, Steve. Well, thank you, Jeff. I just would like to thank the board and the committee and everything on behalf of the team of Architecture Incorporated and the DLR Group. We have a large staff, we're ready to go, we're committed to make a successful project for the Sioux Falls School District, and we're ready to go. We'll start tomorrow morning if you want, Jeff. Thank you again.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, there's gonna be a lot of work in the month of October that we'll be doing, site analysis, programming, and those sort of things, before we can even start putting drawings on the table to show you. So a lot of work to happen as we go forward, and I think they're up to the task. With that, we recommended the president and business manager enter into a contract with Architecture Incorporated for the new Northwest High School. So the main contract will be with Architecture Incorporated. Any questions on any of the process and what we have?
I'm just glad to see that you maintained your composure while saying 2021.
I still choke a little bit, but, I mean, this gives us about two and a half months more than we would have, if we'd have waited for everything. So it gives us a little bit of hope, and there's a lot of work to do in the front end, so.
Yeah. I think we're all excited to see what you guys come up with as far as location and what that eventually looks like. as far as location and what that eventually looks like. And I know I've talked to people outside of Sioux Falls who are like, they haven't seen a big city high school be built in a long time. And so they're excited to see what does that new, you know, excitement and the new features that a high school might have. So I'm equally excited to see what the team comes up with and comes back to us with. So thank you.
The full district and that team will come up with some unique things. And it'll be an exciting time. Look forward to bringing it back to you.
Jeff, I'm going to ask you a question that I think I know the answer to, but I'm not positive. So I'm going to ask you the question. Arc Inc. has done some recent projects for the district.
Yeah, the two most recent is Susan B. Anthony, that elementary school, Sotomayor. That was a prototype of that. And this team actually did the Career Technical Academy, the Architecture Incorporated, with the DLR Group.
So they were married for CTE Academy?
Yeah.
And then, and DLR was?
DLR, actually, one of the arc designers that are going to be on this team actually were teamed with Coke Hazard on the Roosevelt and Washington High School. So he has, he knows our district. He's been part of the team. So, I mean, it's good to see some of the same faces in that, so.
All right, thank you.
I move to acknowledge the results of the RFP process and authorize President Business Manager enter into a contract with Architecture Incorporated and DLR Group for the new Northwest High School. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
No, it was a good process. And Todd Tulkey and I were the board members that were on the interview committee for the final three. So it was a hard decision. We had some really good candidates, but it was clear that we've got a good group that we're going to be working with. So thank you very much.
All right. I have no further discussion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, now, on to the report on the canvas of the election. We have three folks who have signed up to address the board on that. We have a total of 15 minutes allowed. So since we have three folks, we'll give each of you five minutes. And we will start out with Scott Ershman. When you come forward, please give us your name and your address.
Scott Ershman, Sioux Falls. And I know you only have 15 minutes.
Could you give me your street address, please?
806 South 10th Avenue.
Thank you.
And I know we only have 15 minutes, but if there's some time left after the three of us speak, Mr. Danielson wasn't here in time to sign in if he could talk, if we have time permitting. And if he could grant that. I know we talked a little bit when the meeting started that school boards normally run their own elections. That's not an issue here. Never was an issue with me. You should be running your own elections. The issue was with the largest school district in the state and the largest bond ever passed in the state, it only made sense to contract the county, whether that's Minnehaha or Lincoln County, to machine tabulate the votes. Now, what I saw on election night was hand counting, numbers written down on a piece of paper, and then the piece of paper given over to some other people to type into the computer. Are those pieces of paper available for audit or view by the public? This is why a machine tabulation makes much more sense. Because if you ask Bob Litz, the machine tabulates the votes. It goes automatically on a flash drive that he cannot manipulate. And that flash drive gets automatically put into a computer, which gets uploaded to the Secretary of State. He has no clue of what those votes are. And that is how you run a fair and transparent election. Now I want to talk about the 85%. Now, I figured the bond would pass. There was no opposition. But I didn't think it would pass by that much. I might tell you why. There's a lot of precedent here. The only thing that's ever came close to that 85% in our community was snow gates. That got a 76% approval rating. Zero increase in taxes for snow gates, zero. In fact, they've never raised taxes for snow gates. There was zero money spent on the initiative to get it passed, passed by that much. The event center passed by, I believe, 55%. That was $180 million tax increase. That was an advisory vote, a little trick they played because if it would have been a bond vote, it would have failed. So they played a little trick, called an advisory vote. And then they go, oh, look, 55% of the public supports this, so we'll just vote it in as a council. That got 55%, hugely popular. The T-School bond took three times to pass that. That's just right outside of here. The Harrisburg bond took two times to pass that. That is why this 85% number just seems so incredibly mysterious to me. And all we've ever asked is that we can audit this election as a public. Can we look at all the paperwork, all the numbers, how the numbers were transferred from the counters? And I even would like to see a recount through a machine where no one can manipulate with the machine. There should be an available independent audit. And by the way, state law requires you to keep the ballots for 60 days. Bev Chase was on the news, I think, the night of the election or the day before.
We're not going to attack a district employee. I've told you that before, Scott, and I'm telling you that one more time.
All I'm going to say is what she said to the news. She said the ballots will be destroyed. Well, you got to hold them for 60 days. Just want you to know that. Now, we also don't know what kind of software you used. We have no idea if the software performed correctly to make sure that people didn't vote twice. Or the software can screw up on its own. In other words, if I went in and voted once, it could make it look like I voted more. Also, the undervotes, incredible. 18,000 people voted in this election, and there was only 23 undervotes. That is almost virtually unheard of. There was a central district election a few years ago. We were pretty surprised by the numbers. But there's two people running for the central district. I'm not going to say their names. But one of them got about 3,000 votes, and another one got about 2,000 votes. There was 1,000 undervotes, 1,000. Now, what is an undervote? That means somebody practices their right to vote. They show up. They don't like yes or no, so they don't mark anything. That vote gets thrown into the ballot box. It must be counted. There was only 23 people who didn't mark anything. That's some pretty high precedence right there. Like I said, by state law, you are allowed to run your own election. There's not much I can do about that. But as a citizen, I would love to see a recount. I really believe this 85% number, it's a record. It's definitely a record. But for $300 million tax increase and 85% of the citizens approved it, it's just never virtually happened in the history of this state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Shield Byce. You also have five minutes and your name and your address, please.
Sorry, not trying to waste time. Mary Shield Byce, 7625 West Virginia Street. I don't want to address anything about the election, the bond vote, except I was here the night of the vote. I was here till almost 11 o'clock. I didn't listen to Deanne wherever she went. I stayed on that side. I watched the people count. Their diligence was, I had never watched a hand count before. So I watched them. I watched them closely. I watched the boxes come in. I watched the integrity with which the boxes were kept, the lock boxes. And I just want to say to all the people who came out that night, because when there was 19,000 votes, we joked that I would make the breakfast burrito run because at that point, we only had four teams of people counting ballots. So those people who came in and counted, they just were very diligent and stayed on task. And well done to those people who counted. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Vernon Brown. Also five minutes and your name and your home address, please.
Vernon Brown, 1220 South Phillips Avenue. I just want to echo what Wade said. Congratulations. 85% is an amazing number. And I just came from Washington High School for parent-teacher conferences. And I know that is not one of your most crowded high schools, but the excitement in that building was palpable. You could feel it. And every staff member I encountered there was excited about the possibilities for Sioux Falls and the education landscape. And I told every one of them, that is because of you sitting up here. 18 months, you have been transparent. You have been open with the issues of crowding in this district, and you did it the right way. So thank you for that as a citizen of Sioux Falls. And I also want to congratulate your election staff, who did it right, who did it open, and did it very fair. And I know sometimes they are maligned for what they do. They have a hard job. They did it very well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and as to Scott's request, I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to deny that. We have rules for public input, which we attempt to adhere to. And next time that Bruce would like to address the board, I suggest that you be here before we start at 5:30. So we will move on to the report on the canvas of the election results.
Thank you, Mr. President. As everybody knows, we had the election last Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. We did hand count the ballots. So state law requires that we read them off by each precinct or vote center. So I'll do that. I'll say the vote center and then the yeses and nos. Peace Lutheran Church, 1565, 253. Memorial Middle School, 1803, 219. Career and Tech Academy, 352, 71. Mary Carr Community Center, 303, 90. Wayate Community Center, 401, 118. Asbury United Methodist Church, 970, 184. First Lutheran Church, 855, 135. Wesley United Methodist Church, 397, 160. Kenny Anderson Community Center, 662, 177. Morningside Community Center, 1720, 332. Gloria Day Lutheran Church, 1042, 162. Faith Baptist Fellowship Hall, 1313, 234. Constructional Planning Center, 1524, 221. And the absentee precinct, 3016, 354. The totals are 15,923 yes, 2,710 no. It's 85.46% yes. We have in front of you a motion to approve the canvas of the election. I would recommend that somebody read that when we proceed.
I don't have it. Read it, yeah, you want to read it?
I would like to make a motion to, does anybody want a second? To acknowledge the reading of the totals by vote center. Action 37790, adopted on 6/12/2007. And acknowledge the canvas of the results of the special bond election of the Sioux Falls School District held on September 18th, 2018. On the ballot question, shall the Sioux Falls School District 49-5, Minnehaha and Lincoln County, South Dakota, issue its negotiable general obligation school bonds in a principal amount not exceeding $190 million, issued in one or more series, bearing interest at such rates as may be determined by the school board, payable and maturing from one and not to exceed 30 years after the date of issuance, for the purpose of financing a new high school, a new middle school, a new elementary school, additions and expansions to existing school facilities, land purchases, other school district improvements, furnishing and equipment same, and cost for the issuance of the bonds. The yes votes cast were 15,923 for an 85.46%. The no votes cast were 2,710 for a 14.54%. Of the 107,400 registered voters of the Sioux Falls, or of the school district election, 18,656 voters went to the polls, which resulted in a 17.37% turnout. Mr. Beek read the vote center report poorly.
I will second that motion again.
Okay. We have motion and second, discussion.
I would like to just address a few things. First of all, to Bev and her team, you did a fabulous job. Thank you for your hard work. The county's canceled our contract and using machines. Scott, if you would like to listen to, I'm actually addressing what your questions were because they told us we could be like every other school district in the county in Minnehaha. So maybe have a discussion with Mr. Litz on that. Machine counting hasn't worked so well for the county the last few years. It worked pretty darn well here. And I would put the people who work here and the integrity of the people, you've shown no evidence of any nefarious actions by anyone. And to sit up here and accuse them of this is just uncalled for. So when you come back with some proof, maybe you can then address that to us. But until that, the school district employees did this and the other employees that Bev hired to handle this with the utmost integrity. It was open to the public. And her shredding comment wasn't for the next day. She knows the rules of when she can and cannot destroy the ballots. Thank you.
It was a great turnout. It was a tremendous effort on the part of the committee that registered and was the vote yes committee. There was a ton of work done by that committee shortly prior to the election. The process that we went through as a district, I think, has proven itself to be very successful. And frankly, I'm proud of the work that we've done. And the concerns of everyone that has spoken with regard to where the buildings will be, how they will be placed, the work that's going to be done, you have my guarantee as a member of the school board that those concerns will be addressed as this process moves forward. We have a history of doing that. We will do that again in the future. And I couldn't be more proud of the service of our committee, of our school board in working through this process. 85% is an incredible number. What that speaks to is the community of Sioux Falls' commitment to public education and to the Sioux Falls School District. And I thank the people of the school district for their affirmative vote. So work well done. Thank you all. So any further discussion?
I would echo what you said. And I would say that in my general course of interacting with people for the last several months, I would ask people, what do you think? And I did not encounter a single person who said, give me a reason why I should vote for that. I think that we did a great job of being out in the community. I know Dr. Maher went to many, many meetings. There were other people on from administration that went and visited a variety of places and visited a variety of places and laid the case and said, here's what we need. Help us to decide what to do. And again, Sioux Falls is committed. We value our kids. We value our workforce. We value our community. And that is what people came to the polls and spoke about, and they casted their vote. And I just, I feel very strongly, and I feel very proud. 85% is awesome. I'm not really surprised, because I feel like the people who I talked to gave me the confidence to know that when that election was over and the ballots were counted, we were going to win this. We were going to, we were going to come away with a great success for our students that was going to last us for many, many, many years in the future. And so I feel very confident with the process that we used, and I feel very confident, I'm like Vernon, I can feel the excitement of people at all levels, elementary, middle, high school, even people who don't have kids in school but whose kids graduated from Sioux Falls schools are excited about the opportunities that kids in our community are going to have because of this vote. And so I, again, thank the people of Sioux Falls and the, and the school district who have kids, who don't have kids, who eventually will have kids. Everybody is impacted. There's something in this for everybody, and I think that people spoke and told us that they're very supportive, and they're, they're grateful for the opportunity to be a part of something like this, so.
Thank you.
85%, we obviously did it right, did the right thing, and the city spoke. They trust us and understand our needs. So I'm excited. I'm proud. Let's move forward.
Very good. The, the rule calls for a roll call vote, so I will ask each of you individually. Board Member Tulkey?
Yes.
Board Member Parker? Board Member Mickelson?
Aye.
Board Member Ryder?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That's five of us, five ayes, unanimous approval. That goes along with the 85%. That motion carries. Thank you all very much. Any other business to come before the board?
I would just like to also thank Dr. Maher and his whole team, you know, and the task force for helping to educate the public, and that's where the success came to. And thank you for all the extra work you all put in to get this accomplished.
Thank you. All right. Nothing else to come before the board? May I have a motion for adjournment, please?
I move to.
We are adjourned.